Good evening and welcome to the July 17, 2024 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on July 17, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided in the notice of meeting available on the Town of Yarmouth website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Burda.
Yes.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Here.
Peter Slovak.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent, and Joanne Crowley present. Soon we have a quorum. I'll now call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item on our agenda tonight are two potential zoning bylaw amendments. One, the first one, is regarding Section 412 dot four, payment in lieu of affordable housing. This is something for us to consider, a potential zoning amendment to revise the method of calculating the payment of, in lieu of fees related to affordable housing. We had discussed this at a previous meeting, and in our packets is a memo from Kathy Williams are, from Mary Wagon to us regarding this proposed amendment. Kathy, why don't you run through?
Sure.
We've gone through this once before, but why don't you just run through what the amendment?
Yep. I think the only thing that I did is when Mary Wagon, our housing specialist, had met, you guys had had a lot of discussion and questions about, you know, the whole Warren Group data and trying to create a payment that was more appropriate to the difference between a median home price and an affordable home price. But during that time, there was also some discussion about making sure that developers had some predictable number in order to use, and that it wasn't something that was changing every month based on the Warren data changing every month. So what you see highlighted here, I put, gave you this whole section, so you hadn't seen the whole section before, and just kind of highlighted that we are looking for that difference between the median sale price and the affordable price, but then adding that extra sentence that "the cash payment amount shall be calculated on an annual basis when the house," was it Housing and Livable Communities calculates the affordable price and shall be set for the following 12-month period. That way you'll get a general idea of what those costs would be as you're moving forward through the development process.
Any questions or discussion?
Kathy, yes. Ms. Burda. Kathy, when we had the hearing, did we discuss, I think we did, but I can't remember what we talked about, how easy will it be for Mary to adjust this? This took a long time to get this new, you know, the new potential calculation into effect. Is someone authorized if, for example, housing prices skyrocket, and we want to be able to raise the contribution? How easy is it going to be to, does anyone have the authority to?
It's very easy, because this isn't setting anything. It's basically saying as housing prices, median home prices go up, based on the Warren data.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Kathy, do we need a motion on this, or is it just the consensus of the board that this?
At this point, it's just the consensus of the board that this is a change that you want to be making for special town meeting, and that we will work on including it in some type of public hearing that we'd have probably in September. We're a little later with our special town meeting this year, I believe it's November 19th, so we have a little extra time. But also in September, we're probably going to also try to be having some type of public input session regarding the local comprehensive plan, so it might be something that this can be done maybe in early October, depending on when that is.
The hearing on amendments would be in October. Okay, great, all right.
So I'm assuming that that sounds good?
It sounds good. The second potential zoning bylaw amendment on our agenda this evening is with regard to Section 404.5, seasonal employing housing. Kathy, why don't you walk us through, this is not going to be discussed this evening as per the request of the two citizens who have been, Kathy's been working with, to get this on the agenda for the special town meeting. So why don't you give us an update?
These two ladies, I think, had talked to the planning board previously about their, some of the concerns that they had about the Village Green, which is located in the HMOD2 overlay district, but the underlying zoning district is residential, so they wanted to limit the ability to have seasonal employing housing just to the 15%, not even allowing a special permit to go up to the 100%. And then they also had some concerns with regard to the language with, for transient definition and making sure that it wasn't, someone just moves from one room to the next room in the same, the same day, so they, we included some, a language of "at a single motel or hotel property." I don't want to get into it, because I want to give them the opportunity to present, but what we did is staff took their input, talked, had some conversations with town council, I had some conversations with Mark Grills, and we kind of worked up this red line edit for a potential zoning amendment.
And we expect that they will come to talk to us on the 21st?
Correct, August 21st, they've asked.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, that was going to be my one question, Kathy, town council has reviewed what they proposed?
Yes.
And this redlined version is from town council, or?
I have to run the exact language by town council, but they, I had sent him the information that they had provided, and had some questions with regard to it. I think they had included information multiple times, where you don't necessarily need to do it, just some familiarity with zoning. But yeah, I think everyone's okay with this language, but I can certainly run it by town council before that meeting.
I think that would be appropriate, Madam Chair.
Yes, okay. But they will be presenting this to us on the 21st?
They'll be presenting what they and.
What they have suggested.
Right, what they had suggested.
Okay.
And then I think after that, you can kind of say, well, what, I can explain what we worked up as staff with town councils.
That we think would work.
Yeah, I think it gets to the intent of what they're looking at.
Yeah. I saw the repetition where they thought they had to repeat it in each of the sections, and it needs to be only stated once.
They did a good job of trying to provide, and I had asked them to do that, because it's very difficult when people are just talking, what exactly are you looking for? So, but when it's in writing, it's much easier to understand and kind of interpret it, and then put it into zoning language.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are they intending to present this as a petition article?
No.
No. They want to have the planning board move it forward.
They want us to sponsor it. Okay, so next on our agenda, Kathy's put together a fairly extensive package with regard to the next steps on the local comprehensive plan outreach. We're looking to get feedback and ideas from various sources, which at our last meeting on the, in June, there had been some discussions with various town departments, Kathy had briefed us on that, to identify specific action items, initiatives, and strategies the town can pursue over the next five to 10 years, to accomplish some of the goals that we've identified in the vision plan. Part of this process, obviously, is to continue with these stakeholder interviews, and Kathy has prepared for our discussion tonight, the next round, and suggestions for the committees that we may want to reach out to. So I'm going to let Kathy run through her memo and guide us through where she wants to, where she wants to take us on this particular journey.
Sure. I just want to emphasize, this is not meant to be an all-encompassing, you know, stakeholder interview with every individual in the Town of Yarmouth. What we're trying to do is kind of hit some of the big heavy hitters, and I think some future committee interviews that we really are concentrating on are the Finance Committee, the Community and Economic Development Committee, and then also the Capital Budget Committee. And included in your packet, and we'll go over them, our little summary, as well as draft interview questions for your input and comment from the planning board. Each group would obviously get a copy of the vision plan, which really is the foundation with which we want to be building, so how can we take the goals and objectives in the vision plan and move it forward to action items, but taking it into consideration, each kind of individual group has a different emphasis, so to speak, in the community. We're also thinking of maybe not interviewing committees that have worked so hard on a lot of existing recently approved plans, so we have the Open Space and Recreation Plan, so maybe we don't need to meet right now with the Conservation Commission, or the Open Space Committee, or Recreation Commission, because they were really a part of the whole development of the Open Space and Rec Plan. And also same thing with the Housing Production Plan, the Community Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust were very much involved in developing that, and they have a very clear plan for their moving forward with affordable housing and community housing. We can certainly reach out to them at any time in the future, or later in the process, and make sure that they are aware of all of our public input opportunities. Some other committees and town staff combinations, I think for some of these committees, it might make more sense to meet maybe with the committee chair, and maybe if they're interested in another member or two, so it's not like a full-fledged quorum meeting, but something that could be a little bit more informal. And they can also have, you know, the associated town staff person, either the person who staffs that committee and/or someone who is very knowledgeable about that particular topic, and kind of have these different groups. One of them was DY Regional School District versus trying to meet with the school committee, maybe we meet with the superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and maybe anyone else that they might recommend, and we have a draft interview questions that we can go through as well. Things like the health, we don't really, I don't really have a clear understanding of what the health department's initiatives are. I know that they're very busy, and they have a lot of things on their agenda items, but it would be good to meet with the Board of Health Director and our Health Director and kind of get an idea of what they're working on now, and what are kind of some of the visions of the things that they want to be working on for public health in the future. And again, same thing applies for the senior center, you know, there's a whole age-friendly committee, maybe we meet with their chair, maybe someone from the Council on Aging, as well as the Director of Senior Services. What kind of things you got going on, what's important to you? And then how can we come help you with that with some specific action items in the LCP? Recycling and solid waste, we got a little bit of information when we met with the DPW Director, but the Assistant DPW Director is really very much in control of the transfer station and all of that type of thing, and they have a whole recycling committee, we might maybe meet with that, with that chair. The Energy Committee, they seem to have a lot of great things going on, I myself am not familiar with that. So maybe the Town Engineer, because there are a lot of energy projects going on, as well as the Energy Committee. Historic preservation, you know, there's Old Kings Highway and the Historical Commission, what kind of things are going on there. We do have a Disability Commission now that is staffed by the Human Resources Director, so maybe meeting with them and getting some direction on what they, what they're working on. Do know that they were working on some transition plans and assessments at public buildings to kind of see, look into their accessibility. We have a lot of coastal infrastructure, obviously, so maybe having a meeting with the Director of Natural Resources. I do know that the Director of Natural Resources and the Town Engineer have been doing a lot of things with regard to coastal resiliency, they just gave a presentation on Packet Landing and some proposed improvements there. They also have an MPP grant in, to look at low-lying roads and some other things in order to look at our resiliency. And then, of course, the libraries, I think the libraries have a fairly clear plan in the near future with regard to at least what they want to start working on, but meeting with the library director and the planning, maybe the planning committee, and maybe the library board chair, just kind of have a little bit more of an informal conversation about that. Other people, obviously, we will have a meeting with the Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator, they have wealth of information. We all know the SLAC Board is going to be, having a meeting on Saturday to start talking about their goals for the next fiscal year, so hopefully.
What is this, Kathy?
The SLAC Board.
A SLAC Board, okay.
Yep, so hopefully we'll get some, some input from them on what's a priority for them. Obviously, I think some of the things that they are most concerned about are the things that we're all concerned about, you know, water quality, you know, the mixed use in our, in our business districts, and that type of thing. And then maybe some other groups that we might want to talk to, I think, you know, a good group would be the Cape Cod Young Professionals, I mean, that's a kind of a demographic that we don't necessarily get a lot of input from, so maybe reaching out to them. Maybe the Cultural Center of Cape Cod. We did have a very, very productive meeting with the Hyannis Park Civic Association, they're very detailed in their, their concerns and information, but maybe there's some other neighborhood organizations that you guys know some people, and maybe we would. The Rotary, I don't know how you get information from the Rotary, because it's made up of everybody. The Rotary is a.
That's the thing, there's a little bit of everything that, I mean, when you start looking at business owners and stuff, that's a good place to talk to the President, maybe he can put you in touch with some of the individuals you want to talk to, but.
Yep. Yeah, I think it's kind of narrowing down the focus, I mean, I know the Rotary meets, but you get 15 minutes at the Rotary Club. I mean, so you really need to have a separate.
You'd probably want to talk to the President and have him give you a couple guys and gals to meet.
Yep. The other thing I was thinking of is, we did have some questions when we met with the businesses, but not all of the businesses were able to meet the, to make the meeting, and some of them were retail businesses, so maybe working up a fillable PDF and then sending that. Mary Bilbo was very helpful in kind of compiling the business groups, and maybe she could send those out to people who weren't able to attend, and they could fill that in, so we get a little bit more information that way as well. So that's kind of the general groups that we're thinking of. Before we get into questions, maybe you want to just kind of discuss.
Madam Chair, Kathy, just some stuff that just jumped off the page to me as I read this really, I think it's a great, I think it's a great start, and everything that's being done is just really, but some stuff that I just was curious about, one of them I don't see on the page, the town borders it. How about the airport? With the expansion that's going on at the airport already, with, you know, you got JetBlue coming, now you got American Airlines bringing in some pretty big planes and looking at extended runway, how does that impact Yarmouth? From an economic standpoint, and if the airport's going to continue to grow, how can we, you know, do it in the right way that it truly helps Yarmouth? The other ties to the airport is transportation, you know, if a bus running up and down Route 28, and up and down station, all this stuff to a business, I think we should talk to them and see what the future is of the transportation system here on the spine of Cape Cod, and how we can improve upon that, which is only going to economically help our businesses. And finally, one of the things that I see glaring on here is at least have a discussion wastewater. We're right in the middle of a multi-million dollar project, and, you know, like, for example, the redevelopment of 28, as wastewater comes down the spine, what's the vision, I mean, here's one crazy question, what's the flow rate on wastewater? How much can we put down that pipe, and how's it going to redevelop Route 28? I have no idea. Are they saying you can run and put up 100 new motel, hotel units there, or no, it's got to be all light industry because there isn't enough flow? I just would like to know more about that, so. I think that all ties to the economic plan, and I think if we can really kind of tie some of that stuff together, it'd be great addition to what's already been laid out here.
I think in linking that up, I, if I recall, CEDC was allocating, because we talked with the consultants about this, Kathy, at least two consultant agreements on economic development.
Yeah.
And the corridor.
Right.
Bill Scott was very involved.
Yes.
I mean, I haven't been on that committee in a while, and I forget, Peter, what.
Yeah, I asked at the last meeting.
Because it hasn't gone anywhere as far as, no.
Bill, my understanding was, because I asked the same question at the last meeting last week, and Bill Scott's been out on health leave, so I didn't get an answer.
There's two economic studies that we have funding for. One of them is the marketing study through the Tourism Revenue Preservation Funds, to look at the different types of businesses we might want to draw to Yarmouth, and how we might be able to draw them to the town. And then the other one is really looking at the Route 28 corridor, the Village Center Overlay District, how can we facilitate and make it easier for people to do multi, multi-use developments? We're getting a lot of people coming to the town, looking for Route 28 as 100% residential, and that's not, that's not something that we're really looking for. That's why the road project that we had the other day was so ideal, because it really kind of ticked off two boxes for us. With regard to the flow allocation, when the build-out was done, and it was part of the comprehensive wastewater plant, I believe we have about 750,000 gallons per day that was allocated for additional growth in the Town of Yarmouth. Now, who that goes to and where it goes, that's something that needs to be worked out.
Kathy, that was where I was going, and that was kind of the question where I'd like to see some sort of drill down on that, because, you know, is it all designed to go on 28, or is it designed to allocate to other parts of the town?
It is a combination. Obviously, the emphasis with the potential for redevelopment and expansion and growth is on Route 28 and South Shore Drive. So the first phase actually got a lot of the new growth potential, but we also did include like 1,000 bedrooms kind of peppered throughout all the phases, and again, we're just talking about the eight phases, not the parts that will not be seared, peppered, you know, 1,000 additional bedrooms throughout the community. So we've kind of identified that, I think the next step that we haven't done is, how do you go about making an allocation request, and what's the forms and the process that you need, need to do that? Because we're set. We have our, you know, our land use controls kind of set at our maximum flows that we can have, so now we need to manage to those flows and how we do it. But absolutely, there's a whole kind of gap there right now on that.
Kathy, are these, are these interviews going to be videotaped in any way, or minutes captured, or how are we going to capture these interviews?
If it's a meeting, it might be videotaped, if it's an actual meeting, but otherwise, it's just taking notes during the meeting.
Taking notes, okay. And they'll be typed up and available for everyone?
Yeah.
On that, Kathy, the logistics for the meetings, my expectations, for myself anyway, is that I would like to be able to attend as many of those meetings as possible, and I would invite any other board members to do the same, especially if it's your committee that you're on.
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful if, and any other committee that you may have served on in the past. As an example, Capital Budget, I've served on the past, I probably want to attend that, so that's part of the logistics here, is we have to kind of fit into their calendars, and then we need to match up who is going to join you, who can join you, who wants to join you. So that's, that's, you know, that's part of the logistics, I guess. Am I, am I, have I got it right on that?
I think the less formal meetings, we'll probably, we'll try to do those during the day, probably, because that's when a lot of the other people can meet.
Meaning the other committees?
The other committees, yeah.
Health, senior center, blah, blah, blah.
Right, right. And then the other ones, obviously FinCom meets at night, CEDC usually meets like 4:00, and then Capital Budget usually meets in the evenings. Again, I have to work through the staff, and then work through the chair of those committees, because they may say, hey, no, we're not interested in doing that, just send us the questions, and we'll fill them out individually. I don't know what's going to happen, so we're going to have to, like, kind of, this is the plan, but we'll see how it all, you know.
And on that subject, I think that you've made a good point, the communication will be to the chair of the committee, inviting them to participate, blah, 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 and hopefully they'll want to. And should that be a communique from you?
Yeah.
Should it be from the, from the board?
I could say on behalf of the planning board, you know.
That's fine, I'm getting into some nitty-gritty here, but as we move forward, I think it's just important to know what the, what the steps are to engagement here. When we attack step one, then we take step two, and then we finally get to a meeting.
Do we have a timeframe, Kathy?
I think it's a little aggressive to get them all done by August.
Yeah, yes, definitely. August of this year, definitely.
It would be nice, well, some of the staff and the chairs might be fairly easy to get together, but I just want to make sure that we're asking the right questions.
I'd like to emphasize the point that Ken made, we, I think we need to do a better job of wedding some of these initiatives, like Scott's development initiative on 28 with the wastewater. How do those, what information does he have that we need to wed to the wastewater, or more importantly, what, what is the wastewater plan? How does that affect economic development along Route 28?
Right.
And that's probably the primary job of the planning board, is to start taking some of these reports and forcing these linkages, so that we can have a comprehensive, when we say X, Y, and Z, we can say this reflects economic development, this reflects wastewater, this reflects planning, we force some of these linkages, so that when we make a presentation to the citizens, it's not an isolated committee saying this is what the planning committee thinks. We represent sort of the thinking through these interviews with the, with the other boards on the town.
You're like the holistic thinkers, I guess. Everyone might have kind of the areas that they're emphasizing, you're getting data from all of them, but yeah, you're kind of the ones that bring it all together.
Because I think that way the citizens get a better, for example, if we're going to do something on Route 28, what do we have to do with zoning? How does wastewater affect that? What's there now? What do the citizens want? How does what they want affect, you know, traffic, for example, is a huge issue now. And that's kind of like the umbrella under which the planning board has to take all these reports and sort of make a holistic snapshot of what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Using these, you know, using these committees as.
Completely agree, Susan, because I don't think if we take a look at this from the big picture, we're going to have a great plan that's not going to go anywhere. So I think really it's a matter of, you said, holistically looking at all of this and trying to put together a plan that's actually a usable document moving forward. Otherwise, it's just, you know, everyone's going to have their own vision, it's probably not going to marry together.
Right.
I think a lot of it, you'll find, does all come together a little bit.
I'd like to believe that.
I mean, obviously, you know, wastewater's always been seen as an economic development driver, that's why the whole DIF came, came about, the UMass Donahue Study emphasizing kind of the pent-up demand for some, some development along Route 28. But yeah, you guys are kind of like the clearinghouse, for sure.
And there'll be work done by the consultant as well, I'm just looking at the Gantt chart here, Kathy, on what, what they're, they're going to be doing and doing now, some of the plan elements, they're looking at existing conditions, they're looking at some key issues and needs. All of that needs to be fed to them by us through these interviews. But the, you know, we know that calendar is very tight, we know it's a, it's a very aggressive calendar.
I think we have it. Kathy, how do we get to 750,000? Was that just a percentage of what we, what was the method to?
We actually did a fairly detailed build-out analysis, I think more, more detail than a lot of other communities did, a lot of other communities, let's just say 250,000 or 300,000. But when we were looking at the, the Yarmouth-Dennis-Harwich combination, we wanted to come up with a build-out amount, but we didn't want it to be too high, because then the percentage that we would be paying for the wastewater treatment facility under that would be too high. Plus, you don't want to be over-developing your community. So we looked at all the properties that had the higher density zoning on them, so it really concentrated on the Village Center Overlay District, which had been done subsequent to the 2011 comprehensive wastewater plan. So that was a whole new amount of additional flow potential. The MEP was done a long time ago, so that had some, some flows associated with it. And then we kind of looked at South Shore Drive and made sure that all that development agreement was fully taken into consideration, that we could address all those. And then we also looked at, you know, what properties were more likely to get developed based on the size of them, whether they had less wetlands on them, whether they're outside of a floodplain, whether they had a developer that we knew was, was really interested in making some changes on their property. So we kind of took all of that and tried to come up with some reasonable expectations of build-out on various properties, and that's how we came up with, with the amount. Because we couldn't do it based on if everyone maxed out zoning, because it just, it would have been ridiculous. And then the other component that we need to start looking at is, yeah, this is the wastewater flow, but do, are we sure that we have the water flow in order to be able to accommodate that? So far, you know, with, we've been lucky, because, you know, as we move through time, demands of water have gone up, but then you always have these low-flow fixtures, so they've kind of like balanced each other out a little bit. But I think as we move into the future, that, that's something that we're going to really need to be sure that we have the water quantity. Obviously, the quality is a whole nother issue, as we have more and more things that we're testing for, and we're identifying more things in our drinking water, and we're actually treating our water for the first time ever. So that's something that's, you know, something that we should be concerned about and have action items related to.
So the project we approved last week, the restaurant supply with the apartments above, did that fall into your, your model as far as what you sort of planned for on that particular type of parcel? Is that above or below what?
Nobody, and that's something that we can't, we can't look at parcel by parcel. No one, no one really knows what, how we did this, and what exactly we were assuming on different parcels, because no one has anything. So you're going to find that one person never does anything that we thought was going to do something really big, and then somebody else who we really hadn't thought about was probably going to be developed. That was a restaurant, so that probably had a relatively high flow already, because they're using the existing septic system. So that might end up being a wash on that particular one. But no one, no particular law, it was just a bunch of assumptions, so that we could kind of come up with a number that might make some sense as to how we wanted to grow.
But I have swag. But from my point, we've watched this now for years, that is the poster child for lack of vision on Route 28. And we should have had some idea of how many commercial entities we want there, how many motels, how many restaurants, where they go may be, you know, another discussion, but the town should have had like an overall snapshot of, and I think that's what Scott was trying to get at, was to try to put some sort of. was to try to put some sort of snapshot together about what we want in terms of development along Route 28. Doing it in ad hoc, in an ad hoc fashion, which is what we've done for a long time. It's, Kathy, it results in an ad hoc look. And that's what we're trying to get away from. We're trying to get, we're trying to establish an identity. We're trying to establish, you know, what we want this town to have. And unless we have an overall vision of what we want it to look like, you end up with, it's a great project. It's a good project, it's got housing, it's got, but in the long term, wouldn't it be better if we had, I don't know, a restaurant there? For, in terms of economic development, in terms of revenue for the town? And lacking that sort of overall vision, we end up with sort of these ad hoc little projects. And I've always been concerned that that does not meet the test of long-term planning. It's short-term planning to some extent. And we need to sort of, as you know, we need to sort of broaden our vision a little.
I just don't see how, these are private properties, private property owners, private businesses. They're going to decide whether this is something that I think is a profitable business on this particular location. And then we can, through our zoning, say, yes, we want this. We're encouraging this by giving some whatever cookies that you might be able to give in order to promote that. But never are we going to say that, no, we, as the town, would decide that that property is going to be a restaurant because that's private property.
No, I know that. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not attacking private property. I'm questioning the notion or trying to develop the notion, even though it is private property, how does it fit into the long-term vision of Yarmouth? And what role does the private property owner play in that? And how can he play in that? So that's all. No, the private property is private property, that's.
I mean, the only way we're going to encourage growth, as we all know, if, you know, between diffs and tiffs, to give an incentive for developer to go in there and have a turnaround, which we've talked about, the town's talked about, but it really comes down to, Kathy, as you just touched on it. A business isn't going to go into any property, number one, unless, number one, the property fits it. And number two, that business is going to be profitable. Because nobody's going to look at a business and say, yep, I'm going to build a 400-seat restaurant here and it's not going to make any money for eight months a year. You know what I mean? So.
Any developer's going to do a feasibility study.
That's right.
Right.
Thank you, Jim.
They'll call my colleague down the hall here and ask us to do a highest and best use analysis and that's what they're going to build. Even though, our zoning allows for certain things. And it may, I would have to look at that, it probably allows for a restaurant there.
It does.
The restaurant used to be the.
Financially feasible? Well, apparently not because they tore one down and haven't built a new one.
Well, do you remember the restaurant?
How can you forget it?
First, it was Johnny E's and then it became the Buffet or something.
Buffet or something like that.
There were several iterations, but.
Vacant for a period of time with a 200-seat septic system, so there was plenty of opportunity for somebody else to have picked it up and.
But, you know, if you're an investor sitting, and you, Jim, you've done this. If you're an investor sitting in New York City and you are looking at snapshots of towns on the Cape, you look at certain things. You look, of course, at, you know, income, demographics, all that kind of stuff. We don't stack up too well. And some of it is because we lack a long-term vision for the town. Although Shore Drive is in really good shape because they really have developed a long-term vision for what they want Shore Drive to look like.
I hope so.
But if you were, oh, yeah, because they had all that, those investors say, yeah, we're going to buy this place. And, but, but for 28, as an investor, you see $3 stores, you see liquor stores, you see gas stations, you see the Goodwill store. And you say, hmm, am I going to invest 40 million bucks in doing something there? Is the, as Jim said, is the demographic there to make that investment? And the private landowner is part of that conversation. So it all has to sort of come together for economic development, really, to work. But it's all based on, I think it's all based on, what do you want this place to look like? And how does this, you know, landowner fit into that discussion? And how can we encourage him? How can we incentivize a really nice restaurant versus, you know, what the road project we looked at last week? And that's, that's a long-term, it's a great conversation, it's very exciting. And it produces great results if it's, if everyone participates.
I think, you know, Route 28 has been, there are compartmentalized segments of Route 28 that have, that have a vision. Each of the VCODs has, if you look at the wording in the zoning bylaw, it identifies what kinds of things we want there. And it, but it segments Route 28, as does the Road District. But those, to me, those VCOD and the Road are visionary.
Oh, yeah. There's a common linkage.
They are visionary. And they're a looks, a look that we find acceptable. And for as long as I've been on the planning board, we've had two road projects now, three road projects, where in the 10 years I've been here, we had none before. So it's, that's working. And when one works, someone's going to see that that restaurant supply place works. And there'll be another one. So I think it, we're getting a little bit off track here because Kathy wants us to help her with questions, so I want to get back on that.
Let me ask then.
But please go ahead, Peter.
Because you mentioned the VCOD, and I think the VCOD is outdated in a way it does segment, segment the Route 28. I mean, Luna Canello's Place is part of the hotel and entertainment section. Well, the hotel section was a Cavalier, which is no longer. The gullwing, which is 55-plus. And Luna Canello's Place is sort of starting to steer towards something else if you read what they're proposing possibly and what we hear about. So I think the VCOD needs to be looked at because maybe it needs to move up to the water park section of Route 28 now. You know, I don't know that the VCOD is applicable anymore in terms of how it segments, segments 28.
Yeah, I mean, it's, certainly, it's been, it's, there are portions of it that are out of date, Peter, exactly. And revising that and taking a look at it is something that, you know, we should be doing, absolutely. But at some point in time, there were people who were looking at different areas of 28 to see what could go. And, you know, now that sewers are here, we should probably just throw them all up in the air because it's all going to change.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Can I just follow up on that?
Mr. Rubenstein.
As the current member of the RAC Committee, I would just point out that sewers are here, except nothing is going in a sewer at least until 2027. So the good news is, to tie into what Susan was saying, is that we do have time to do exactly what was just suggested, which is to look at the VCOD and to put that work in over the next two and a half years. So then, there is something knitted together, I think is the way Susan said it, when all the toilets start to flush and go somewhere. We actually do have time to do that. In addition to this LCP process, which, you know, is wonderful, we don't need the LCP in order to do the VCOD work. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Will.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban.
First, Will, thank you for supporting those O's. I'd like the orange shirt, good job, buddy. Just wanted to get that on record.
I'd just like to report we're only four and a half games behind.
But you're behind. I think this kind of goes back to some of the things I've said earlier about our zoning bylaws and the fact that maybe, I mean, we have a LCP to get done, but maybe it is time that we start taking a couple paragraphs at a time and looking at whether some of the things that are in our bylaws are making sense and are up to date and how they are going to be affected by, you know. We can put all these zoning bylaws in place and to put a vision in place, but if less there's incentive to participate, then you could put it all on paper. Well, the searing is in some ways an incentive, right? Sometimes you can offer tax incentives and other things. But searing will be an incentive to economic development. And I think, I think, in my personal opinion, I think it's imperative that we plan for that. Otherwise, we're going to get whatever we deserve, which won't be pretty. Didn't mean to silence the place.
Looking at that 750 number again, you know, and it can.
That's been something I've kind of always wondered, is how did they come up with that number? And.
Well, it's a music calculation. It's just based on the size of the pipe and the expected flow. It's just, you know, the part that's a little, you know, as I was on RAC prior to Will, the part that I find a little, I won't say misleading, but I'm still not 100% with it, is the plant, the initial discharge permits, only 300,000 total. So you can say it's going to increase by 750, but you need a place for it all to go to. And we don't have it yet. So I don't want to get in the weeds about wastewater. It is something that I feel that we should take a look at as this whole comprehensive plan because it is going to base where redevelopment happens. And every one of those committees is right that if we don't get in front of this, we're going to get something that we don't want.
But just to be, just to be fair to the town of Yarmouth for a second, Ken, as you know, the state of Massachusetts is the one that is.
Well, I wasn't.
Only granting 375. But it is, it's one of those things, though, that now, you're right, Ken. We were at 750, but now reality is, right, three, four years down the road after we started this process, more, more like 10. How do we account for these variables in what we thought we were going to get? And this is a conversation I'm sure that Jeff Colby would have with the LCP as well as he does on a monthly basis with the RAC.
Yeah, and I, from my understanding, because I have stayed in the background a little bit to keep knowledgeable on this, there is plans in place to get to that 750 number, just not right out of the gate.
Right. And I think there's a difference between the average daily flow and our peak flow.
That's right, there is.
Average daily flow I'm talking about is the 750's average daily, but I think the affluent discharge would be your peak, so it's even less than that.
Okay.
Well, and, but just to tie into what Jim said, excuse me for interrupting, that could affect the incentives, right? That could, you know, the fact that we're not going to be at peak or whatever for X amount of time, depending on how this all ripples out over time. You know, those are all the things, just to finish on this, from my perspective, that we actually do have the time, and I'm really glad that we're talking about it now with the LCP, but we can also be doing things in parallel. Thank you.
Kathy, when are these conversations going to start? When do you anticipate setting up some of the?
Well, I think it would start with the three big, big ones. I would start like sending out emails as soon as possible. I think the other committees in town, staff, I need to look a little bit more clearly on what questions we would be asking them. And I know that we're trying to tie it consistently back to the, to the vision plan. So obviously, like, the Senior Center is an easy one because we have a whole page on the Senior Center. Sometimes it's worth looking at other components, too. You know, maybe connectivity and, you know, some other things might make some sense. So just kind of looking at that and kind of seeing how we can ask the right questions to get answers for action items.
Madam Chair, I know you had referenced the Gantt chart, and I don't have it in front of me.
I don't either.
But is there, I guess, or when is there, like, what I'll call report-back dates where Scott's going to be reporting back to us? Or is that a plan as part of the whole process?
I'm concerned about the economic development studies. I honestly think.
I'm sure you are, yeah.
We've had funding for that for quite some time and it hasn't moved forward. So I've been trying to push to get those RFPs out so that we can be trying to do some things. But they're behind where we are. So some of the, unfortunately, we may be scrambling more at the end with some action items with regard to the economic development plan, but we might be, I mean, sorry, and the LCP, but we might be ahead of it and have more action items for other components of the LCP. But until I think we get some of those other things, we're not really sure how we would want to move forward.
So let's go to, let's review the questions, Kathy. I think that's where you wanted us to focus.
Yeah, I think it becomes.
And suggestions.
The Finance Committee, and having had a lot of different discussions with them over the time, they have their fingers in everything. So instead of necessarily picking like just the economic, economy goals and objectives like we did for like kind of the businesses and then we peppered in some of the other ones, this is just the, giving them an overview of the actual vision statement because they may have comments and things that they want to ask about in these particular, all of these particular items. But some of the questions that we're looking at asking them is, you know, what do they see as impediments to increasing economic development, to improve our overall economic health? And then what action items do you think we can take in order to do that? It says five to 10 to 20 years, maybe 20 years is too aggressive and we just say in the next five to 10 years to rectify them. But hopefully, that's something where they can kind of give some specifics. And maybe some of the things, some of the action items, we need to study X more. And that's a legitimate action item as well. We have a gap. We've done all this LCP work and we have a gap in our information here. So let's fill that information void by having a study that does X, Y, and Z. And then specific action items may come out of that particular study. We're always doing studies, we're always moving forward, we're always coming up with new action items and that's the problem with these things. They're all so, so very dynamic. And we actually are accomplishing a lot of things. Second item there, I don't know if you want to just go through them all and then I guess we can comment on them. But, you know, are there opportunities, do they think there's any opportunities to explore regional partnerships for economic development? I think there probably are. And there's also the Cape Cod Commission's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And is there anything in that that we might be able to use in the town of Yarmouth? I've only looked at it in a very cursory manner at this point. I don't know if any of you have looked at it, but I think that's something we should all kind of have a look at. And that's an actual link to the comprehensive economic development strategies.
Kathy, is that something that we could have the commission come in here and, you know, have it one evening?
Probably good.
Present it to us? Because I've done just the same thing as you, a cursory look, and there's so much to it. Maybe if we had them in, they could give us more of a bridge version rather than us trying to read the plan, which is, I think, like 800 pages. It's huge.
I think if you get to it, you get to like page 50 or something is where you start getting into some of the good stuff. But it's a lot of great background information. But that's certainly something I can ask them. They're very accommodating with that type of thing, so sure. I know that the Finance Committee, just in meeting with them with regard to things like the Riverwalk Park, they're very concerned about housing and affordable housing and finding different places for housing. And maybe they have some ideas. I know that we've had some conversations with Stephanie Cox and she's had some good ideas.
I want to say, I'm sorry. How and when do they get involved in those discussions? I think of the, I think of the Finance Committee as having a statement about what their responsibilities are. I know they, they get to opinionate, if that's the right word, on everything because they look at our annual budget.
Well, I think where they come into it is I think they do vote on whether they approve the CPA applications. A lot of them are related to, you know, recreation versus affordable.
Finance committee recommends or doesn't recommend, right?
And obviously, you know, having adequate housing for employees plays a huge role in our economy and being able to have all those different revenues that come in from meals tax and motel taxes and that type of thing.
And would you say that that's mostly related to the warrant? That their involvement in these things is linked right to the warrant?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, to my knowledge, that they're like getting into the weeds with the Community Housing Committee or anything like that.
The linkage to the warrant, right.
Yes. And then just, and obviously, they have, they play a role in the capital projects. They vote on the capital projects. So what do they see as being the most important ones? And then one of the things, obviously, we always talk about other employee, other businesses being able to attract and retain employees. But the, one of the largest components of our operating budget is actually our staff. So how do we better steward our staff resources and attract and retain employees? Because we have the same troubles other people do. One of the things that kept coming up over and over and over again in, in our visioning was that we should be doing better job of maintaining what we have. And so whether they have any ideas and how we might be able to do better with our maintenance needs in a cost-effective manner. Obviously, everything about the Finance Committee is doing, is providing as high level of service as you possibly can in the most cost-effective manner. You know, and then I think one of the other things that came up in the vision plan was, you know, participating in local government and whether they have any ideas and how we can improve that and see whether, and then how can we get the support of the public on the municipal budget and capital projects? I think a lot of times, it seems like when people come to the warrant, it's the first time they're kind of hearing about some of these major projects and if they have any ideas and how we might be able to facilitate that. And then because the Finance Committee is involved in so many different aspects of the town, do they have any suggestions on action items for any of the goals and objectives outlined in the vision plan? And then do they have any ideas or want to share what they believe are critical issues that have not already been addressed or brought up? Because there's, I'm sure there's stuff that we've missed that will come up in the LCP process. And then kind of was the top three key points to, for us to take away from the interview. We found that was kind of interesting with the business community. They're kind of like, be more progressive, you know, which was a good, that was one of their takeaways, was to try, for the town to be more, more progressive. So those are kind of like some of the questions. I don't know whether you guys have any edits or comments or changes or additions.
I have one addition, Kathy, and it's probably just a, a hybrid of what you've, you've got up there. I think it would be important to ask them, what are the most critical issues related to balancing future budgets? I have this, I have this in writing, Kathy. What are the threats to our revenue stream? What are the threats to our revenue streams? Short-term rental revenue, federal-state grants, formula allocations, tax and fee revenues, investment income. If you listen to former Selectman Holcomb recently, he has been on, on a, on a, on a mission to get more information about where are, where the town is investing and how our, what would we call it, our, our various bank accounts, how much are they earning, are they earning the most they can? Are we, you know, so, in line with that. Secondly, we have aging infrastructure, we have a water supply system, we have roadways, we have town buildings. What are the, what are the concerns there with regard to unexpected expenses? And then we have operating expenses, employee benefits, health benefits and the like. Retirement contributions are always going to be an issue. I don't think we ever are able to make an perp contribution that's exactly what it should be. And then, and technology upgrades. And then in line, really, in asking those questions, I would ask them, and what do you think we should be doing to mitigate or, or, or protect ourselves going forward? Because I think you have to look at, where's our revenue coming? Where are we spending it? What are those threats? And, 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 and concerns that they might have? Because they see the inside of this stuff. Most, you know, we don't see it unless you dig deep into it. So that, I would just add that as a suggestion.
Yeah, I think those are all really, Madam Chair, those are great points, because I think, you know, the biggest thing we have from a revenue standpoint is where are our threats coming from? We only have a finite amount of money, and we know the state money coming back to the town is getting less and less every year. So taking a look at how we're going to keep a balanced budget moving forward and stay, you know, cost-effective is important. I think those are great points.
Okay, next.
CEDC, I think, was a little bit easier because they, they kind of have more of a focus to them, so what we did was actually try and take the preserve, promote, provide objectives from the vision plan and kind of list them here, so these are things that they may want to be providing particular comments on. It kind of touches on all of the areas that they touch on. And then it gets back to some of the questions about, again, asking the CEDC about impediments to increasing our economic development, and ways to rectify them and provide a clear path for economic growth. Kind of really, what do you think that we should be doing to better support our businesses? What are some action items we could take in order to do that? Any recommendations the CEDC has on ways to increase year-round and seasonal workforce housing? I think it's good to get that asked to as many different groups as possible. And then what do you foresee, again, with the most cap, important capital projects over the next five to 10 to 20 years? Again, asking them about the regional partnerships for economic development and about the SEDs. And then again, just kind of the last three questions, I think, are very, are the same about, do they have any suggestions on any of the goals and objectives in the vision plan? What are their critical issues that haven't already been discussed, and then kind of their top three key points? So I don't know whether there's anything from the FinCon that might make sense to put over here as well, based on Joanne's comments.
I think there's a fair amount of crossover between the two. The one, the only thing that I thought when I was just jotting some notes was under number two, you know, support our businesses, our current businesses, but also doesn't say anything about attracting new businesses. So I think that should be added in there.
I don't think we can, you can underestimate the amount of time, and you know this, Ken, the CEDC spends on parades and deciding where this money goes. I mean, this is, this is a strong ask for a committee that, you know, doesn't meet weekly or monthly, you know? They certainly will have opinions on this, but I, they haven't, they don't have the, they haven't been asked to drill down and get to these answers because they, they haven't been given that role in certain ways. Trying to be kind here.
And that's a weakness, and that is a weakness.
Okay.
Well, that's
You know a lot about parades
Yeah.
And things, but
Yeah, and that is, that is a weakness.
And, and there's some really good people on this committee now, and they will have answers, and, but, I'm just
I do think you've touched on a little bit on number five, when, and we've already talked about having, you know, the commission in here, or potentially getting the commission in front of us when we talk about the financial side. They've done economic studies across the board as well, so I think there's a lot of stuff we can drill down. Rather than reinventing the wheel, use some of the resources we have available, available to us as
And we've already paid for.
And we've already paid for. As Peter put on, you know, the CDC does tremendous amount of work and a lot of really good stuff, but the capacities of that committee are only so large.
They wish they could do more of this, I know that for sure, and I know, I can see we're trying, but I, you know, we, you know, there are certain times we can't get answers on the economic development study. We've funded for the last two years, where is it? We gave you the money, when's it coming? That would help us, help the committee. So they would certainly like to attack this more than what they are tasked to attack, I guess, you know, so.
Good point.
Anyone else? I'm not sure if this is for this or finance, or I'm not sure where it goes, but Maticke's redevelopment is the single largest town-owned property that's out there. So I don't, I don't know who we ask.
I think it falls, Madam Chair, I think it falls in a lot of committees. I think it falls finance, I think it falls here, I also think it falls in the capital budget, too. I think you look at it from a holistic standpoint, you got probably one of the largest parcels of land in Yarmouth that is now turned over and sitting there with the lights on, collecting dust. I know there's a study, a reuse study, but I think there's a huge economic engine available there, I really do.
It's interesting, because we did have a question on Maticke's, in both the Finance and CEDC, about, like, you know, what type of uses or do you see as potential helping the town
What is the status of that committee that they were supposed to be setting up? Because Jim and I both submitted our names.
I
I think Joanne submitted our names, right?
No, you, you submitted them.
Independent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Talent Bank.
I have a feeling that they don't want a committee. Just my personal opinion. I think some people just want to tell us what to do, and get in line, and they just accept it. That's my personal opinion.
I do know there are a lot of people that have put their names in that haven't heard, and they're wondering why they haven't heard, so.
That's my reasoning.
Before I sent out the inquiry, there was only seven people who had put their names in, so there wasn't that many. I don't know how many there were after some
Well, there's two right from this committee, so
Because I sent out the request saying they need some people.
I appreciate that.
Well, isn't it true that Bill Scott has been doing almost all the work on it, and if it is true that Mr. Scott is on medical leave, then we are going to look at an even further delay to a committee that should have frankly started 12 months ago? More than that, but anyway.
Okay.
So hopefully someone will politely say something to the town administrator so that we can keep pushing this project forward, because without that committee starting to meet, nothing's going to happen.
Right.
So did you want to ask a question?
Yes.
What would you, what, about uses, or what you see as redevelopment of those, of that site being like?
I'd start with the status of the committee, is Jim, so let's find out where it is.
Well, we're looking for the LCP.
Questions for CEDC.
Right, but I'm talking independent of that, and then go into the questions about, to the economic development.
I mean, the simple question is, what does the town see, what do we see as the vision for that particular parcel to help drive it as an economic driver for the town? One of the things that was touched on is workforce housing, for example. I mean, there's just a, you know, an example of potential use of that space, you know? There's just been discussions about centralizing the library, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff. It's a huge parcel and a huge building. You could do a lot with it and make it a driver of economic development in Yarmouth.
You could even sell it to somebody, build a convention center.
Well, you could even sell it to a private developer.
Yes, you could.
I think that's kind of, it gets into the zoning.
Absolutely gets into zoning issues.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've thought about it as well.
That's what we do.
It is, but you can't do spot zoning.
Can't spot zone, it's a
You don't have that.
Well, this might be a case where maybe that makes sense for some, if we can finagle some type of 40R mixed-use type thing, you might want to be breaking that up into multiple properties and having multiple uses on it.
Let's think about what we can do as opposed to what we can't do.
Right.
Let's not let zoning be the
No, I, I, I'm 100% with you, Susan.
It's not, but you can't, you can't just put
Can we just put an overlay over there?
I agree, but as Jim's point is, we can change zoning.
But you can if it's spot zoning.
Well, I'm not advocating a spot zoning.
You don't have to spot zone it, but we can recognize that if the zoning was this, then maybe there's a way to change the zoning, that it isn't spot zoning, then it affects a greater
Correct.
Like I said, if we can carve out a piece of town to create an adult entertainment zone without it being on Route 28, then I think we can carve out almost anything we want, as long as the people in the community do it, and it's not spot zoned and in violation to
And it also, it falls in line with your comment about maybe we should be looking at zoning overall, to see what we should do to upgrade it and, and keep it more in line with what the town has as a vision.
Well, I think what we're trying to help write is that vision, so.
Yeah. So maybe on Tuesday, maybe right now, there's five individuals that meet on Tuesday nights that are sitting at home watching this, recognizing that, gee, maybe we need to get this committee moving. Maybe they're watching.
Let's, we'll move on.
Capital budget.
Capital budget.
So did we come up with a question for, to add to the CDC about Maticke's?
Do you want to put it on this, in this category?
You could say, you know, like, what, I think what Ken said, you know, what do you see as a vision for the Maticke's property as an economic
This is, yeah, this is one of the things Kathy and I talked about this today, is, like you said, Peter, there's some really good, smart people on that committee. So are we asking them to just strictly wear their committee hat? Or are we asking them as really smart individual volunteer citizens, what do you think? I'd like to think it's a little bit of both. It's a, it's a way to get their ideas, not necessarily just wearing the CEDC cap or the CBC cap, that, well, what do you think we should be doing with Maticke's? We got you, we got you in the room, want to take advantage of their brains.
I think these are the types of questions they would, they would like to answer.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Okay, good.
In fact, most of these, most of these committees should be asked that question on Maticke's, finance, economic development, and capital budget. They should be asked the questions, what do you think about the, of Maticke's question?
Frankly, the task of the Community Economic Development Committee could be, besides just figuring out who gets how many dollars for tourism, could be to identify, they could be working to identify potential grants, et cetera, that can assist in the redevelopment of this site, for regardless of what it is. I mean, there's, there's some economic opportunities that
Planning grants, yeah.
Kathy can tell you, there's money thrown around left and right, you just got to figure out how to apply for what it is you need, and if we don't know what, what's even available, so maybe that's something that they should be looking at. How can you go about expanding our knowledge of incentives to redevelop?
That's an example of why Town and Busble actually has a grant writer on staff.
Yeah.
So for that reason, because the state, the feds have a ton of money willing to pass out, just could ask for it.
Yep. But getting through the grant-writing process is horrific.
It's horrific.
It's really tough.
I found that it's not writing the grant or getting the grant, it's administering the grant. They have such tight timeframes, and getting extensions is very difficult.
Yeah, reporting requirements are onerous.
They're not giving out money, they're not going to make it easy.
Who has the goal makes the rules.
Okay, moving on, Capital Budget Committee.
So, capital budget. Obviously, what do you see as the most important capital projects? And then, you know, are there any newer additional capital improvement projects that they'd like to see included? So maybe there's some things that they're thinking of that haven't really bubbled to the surface, because what they see is a lot of times what is being submitted by different departments and staff. So maybe there's something that they're thinking that we, we need to be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm on that committee, so I'll, there's a lot of, as we touched on earlier about the CDC, there's a lot of great people that dedicate a ton of time for capital budget, but really, in some respects, it's the cart following the horse. And I mean that by the fact that it's the town departments telling us what they need, and there's not a lot of vision of what needs to happen in town, you know, so. I think the next question about the external forces is a great question, because I think it's tough to answer, but I think it's a great question, because God knows what they're going to be.
I think Packet Landing might be a good indicator of that, you know, that's a capital improvement program. But that's also something, because it's coastal resiliency, does have a lot of grants that are potentially for it. We're paying for a lot of the study, studies and for the consultants through grants, you know, Seaport Grant would obviously be good for, for that as well. So there's, there's some good grants that are available for climate resiliency through the MVP program and Coastal Zone Management, so, so that, that's a very good, good point, because we're trying to find all the different sources of the money and use as little town money as possible.
And I will say on number four, one of the things that actually was from the chair this year on capital budget to the town department head is, stop having this be a one-year ask, stop putting some vision into what you need down the road, rather than every year just saying, okay, and this isn't meant in any disrespect to any department, but you need eight more vehicles and, you know, two more snowplows. It's, it's, what are you, what's going to be wearing out down the road, or what do we need to keep the town moving forward? That was asked by the chair of capital budget this year, which I think it did spin a lot of department heads around saying, oh, wait a second, I got to start looking more than one year at a time. And we told them that we're not going to accept next year's capital budget with just a one-year ask. We want to know what's, what you're going to need out there, which I thought was great.
Now, it really should be a five-year, a five-year submission.
That's what was us.
At minimum.
Yep.
So Madam Chair, so when we asked the questions in the Finance Committee, we're asking a question about how we can increase, how can we address our maintenance needs in a cost-effective manner? I mean, that's kind of what Ken is saying with regards to pickup trucks, et cetera, and maybe there's a
You know, don't come to us for a new roof on one of the schools now, just
Now that it's leaking.
Now that it's leaking, exactly. What do you need to do to maintain it, and what can we do? Can we do a quarter of it at a time, rather than asking the town for $2 million to replace a school roof all at once? Can we do it at $200,000 increments or something? We know it's going to go bad, don't do it all at once. And, you know, the, the, the town department heads were very receptive to the fact that the ask was, start looking more than one year at a time.
Kathy, there's nothing that prohibits us from asking the same question to various committees, right?
Oh, not at all.
Okay, so we could, the maintenance question can go to finance as well as capital budget.
So finance, capital, CEDC, or just
All of them, actually, but it's certainly finance and capital budget.
Anything else on capital budget? Okay. Capital District.
I admit that I don't have children of school age, so I have never been really in touch with a lot of things that the school has been doing, other than the give and the push and the pull with regard to when they come for the budget to the Select Board and trying to fit their budget into our overall budget. But we do have a whole section on education and learning vision that's been identified here, but there, they, they are really, the emphasis for the regional school district is really the improved educational performance, and then maintaining the public schools and operating them in an effective and efficient and affordable way. So some of the questions are, maybe getting some, some idea of what's the enrollment forecast? I'm sure they have that, you know, is enrollment going down? I'm assuming so, but I don't know. You know, what are the demographics of some of our students attending? Are they, you know, are people, are there, are we getting any charter students? Are we getting people who need more, more free lunch programs? Are we getting people who need more free lunch programs? What kind of is happening in our school systems? They do have, right now, a strategic plan that goes through the last four years, and so kind of what is your strategic plan goals for the next five years? I'm sure they must be working on that, because the other one expired in 2023.
Do you think that's public, Kathy? That there's the existing strategic plan?
It is, yeah, it's on their website.
On their website, okay.
And so, and then how can the town and the school district work more collaboratively in developing the annual budgets? And maybe it's not just the town, but maybe it's also the town of Dennis? Or maybe it's the school committee, because that includes the town of Dennis? But how can we work better together? I think we've made a lot of improvements in recent years, and I think people feel better about, about things. And how might we be able to better integrate the schools into the overall community with after-school programs, adult education and community recreation, and kind of what programs are currently in place? I do know that there are some programs that are already going on there. I don't know what type of after-school programs they have there, but they do have some recreation programs. Sometimes it's adult basketball and that type of thing. What programming exists or could exist for community-based learning through collaborations with area businesses, town government, or other local organizations? I don't know how much they get out into the, into the community and kind of tap into all those different resources with regard to their education opportunities. Kind of what is, again, asking the capital improvement question to the schools, what do they see happening? We obviously have a new intermediate school, but I'm sure there's things that are going on, obviously, at ME Small that need to be addressed, and maybe that ultimately means a new school there. And I'm sure there's always things going on with the high school, even if it's just general maintenance. And then again, the same three questions there about, oh, wait a minute, any actions, objectives, and strategies that you think the town should consider to support the general goals of the regional school district? So how can we help you do better? And then also, any critical issues that have not been addressed in the three key points? We might want to word things a little bit differently, and Joanne and I had talked about, they have very specific goals with regard to improved educational performance. Maybe we just ask that question. What are your, what are you doing to improve performance?
I think the linkage, Kathy, back to the vision plan, I think is pretty strong with three of the questions leaking right back to the same language, but improved educational performance, I think, we should ask directly. And then, I think you've, I think you've covered everything else in the, in the questions.
Yeah, I guess the, the two things that I jotted down here was, one, which we touched on on a couple spots before, what's the vision for the school system to attract new workforce themselves from a teacher's standpoint? I think it's hugely important to keep the school system, you know, vibrant and moving in the right direction. And then secondarily, I'm just curious what state mandates are coming down from an educational standpoint that they have to meet to keep, and, you know, it's not satisfying our own school district, it's also requiring that the state requires them to do. And I'm just curious what's out there that's going to happen next that they're aware of that we're not that they're going to have to meet.
Madam Chair, after hearing what Kathy said about not having children in the school, it's made me think, and I'm not sure how to form a question here, but since I can remember, there's always been an issue of communications between the school community and the non-school community, the people who don't have children in our schools, and what's going on in our schools, and how they interact with the non-school residents, because we ultimately get to town meeting and it's the non-school residents versus the school residents. And I'm wondering if there's a question about, do they have, what are their plans to improve communications between not only the town fathers in both towns, but the citizenry that don't have kids in school? And I think if we can improve that line of communication and we get them thinking about that, then when we do have some of these issues that come up about funding a band or whatever, then the rest of the community could understand and be more supportive or less supportive.
Do we know, if that notion is included in the new communications director, is that part of her portfolio to work with the school committee and improve communication between?
I do not believe so.
So it's separate and apart? See, there's, okay.
Well, I don't know how to formulate a question based on that thought process, but I'm just wondering if there is a question as to how we go about improve, do you think we need to improve communications within the community? And how do you think we should go about doing that?
If yes, how do you do it?
Yeah, I think that's the question you just asked them right there. How do we improve communication? Forget about whether you have kids or not, it just should be a blanket statement. How does the school system improve communication within the citizenry of Yarmouth and Dennis?
Because we don't all watch Channel, whatever it is.
Right.
Obviously, I don't. Eight?
Eight.
The schools are on eight as well?
I'm assuming that they are.
No, I think.
They have their own channel?
They have their own channel.
Twenty-one or something like that.
See, that's how.
See, now we can start right there.
No, just towns, the county's on nine, the town is on eight, and I'm not sure where the schools are.
I don't, I don't know.
Again, as an example of, you know, how do we improve?
What channel are they on?
We don't even know what channel they're on. How can we keep up with what they're doing?
I believe if they're on 22.
22, I knew it was a 20-something.
Okay, we got enough, Kath, for you to?
No, it's, yeah, and you're going to send me your stuff.
I'm going to give it to you before I leave.
Awesome.
So, meeting minutes are next up on the agenda.
Madam Chair, I moved it, we, yeah, there.
Minutes.
Except the minutes of June 26th, 24.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Susan Britta?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Abstain.
Chris Vincent? Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
Meeting minutes are approved. Any committee updates?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rubenstein?
Unfortunately, though, I did miss the July 8th meeting because of work with Iraq. There already is some talk about starting some public outreach sessions after Labor Day, so that there can be an opportunity for citizens to come, either virtually or in person, to ask more questions about the progress. There probably will be a presentation from the engineers and consultants as well. Those dates and times are to be worked out, and as soon as I know them, I, of course, will spread them. And obviously, if Kathy hears anything from Jeff Colby and Laurie, I'd appreciate it if she could share that. There has been a little increase in the YouTube and some of the other social media and email updates from the DPW, which I think deserves some acknowledgement. The Route 28 construction, we know, is paused and will resume after Labor Day. And you probably know, though, there is certainly plenty of other construction going on, you know, certainly Buck Island and other places as well. And I believe the next meeting is August the 5th. So that's what I have for now. But I hope if Kathy does hear anything in the interim, that she will share it with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Drive-in site, Riverwalk Park, whatever you want to name it. You can go on our Survey Monkey right now and give us your opinions. The drive-in site committee will be meeting the end of the month to review the suggestions. We've already looked at, I don't know, what, about 100 of them right now.
We have over 150 suggestions.
Really?
Some of them are pretty interesting, some of them, yeah, so it's, we will then review those and make recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen, who will ultimately decide what to do. But if you want to have a say in town and what we named the park, then go online and fill out that Survey Monkey and get that back quickly. The second part is, if you drive by the drive-in site now, you'll notice that there's some chain-legged fence out front, because we've got these big things called tractors digging up everything and getting us moving forward. So progress is being made on the drive-in site. Go online, fill out your Survey Monkey, and get it back to Kathy, so we can review those and make a recommendation. Anything else I missed?
Jim, I just got a question. Is there any type of website that could, like, show the progress? Because it's pretty amazing. I've had a bunch of people ask me about it. And I'm like, so I just was curious if there was anything that, you know, might be worth having the new town information officer, you know, make a Facebook page or something and show progress at the drive-in site? Because I probably had a half a dozen people ask me in the last month, what, you know, how's it going? What's going on there? I'm like, what's going on there? This has been years in the making, so.
Which is a fascinating question, and I, people have made comments like, what are you doing there? And you should do this, and you should do that. And I'm thinking, okay, 2015, 2024, yeah, you probably should know what's going on.
I told them it was a launchpad for the space shuttles going on there.
I did update the town website page, because the, the naming challenge says, if you want more information, go here. So at least it kind of gives up a current update on things. But I can certainly talk to Laurie about whether they want to, you know, make it some, take some pictures and do a little filming.
Something good to have, you know?
Fortunately, Dave is leaving, but I'm sure there's somebody else that could get to do that.
But people, some people have put some very serious thought into their naming suggestions, and some of them are kind of a little wacky, but do your thing. That's all I have.
Any other committee?
I'll mention CDC.
Yep.
The group will set out to walk or drive 28, and we're going to be assigned, you know, a mile here, a mile there, for storefront facade improvement. And Kathy, is it Greenfield Grant?
Rayfield, Rayfield?
Rayfield Grant. So they're involved and they're out there. We're going to be out there and, you know, looking over where the opportunities are for the grants.
That's great.
Okay. Any board member items? I have one, and it's about our board member who's not here. Mr. Chris Vincent, we have, we have a, we have a plaque here for you that I guess Kathy you will keep.
Yeah, I can send it to him, sure.
Don't send it, make him come get it.
And the plaque reads as follows, Town of Yarmouth, presented to Christopher A. Vincent and grateful appreciation for your 15 years of service, aspiring leadership, and enduring commitment to the Town of Yarmouth Planning Board. Your efforts have made our community a better place the year 2024. Chris is retiring from the planning board. I guess it's effective for 31st, so he hasn't quite, he hasn't quite left yet after 15 years. He is the one member, I think, pretty sure, that I've served with from the beginning of my term, which I think is about 10 years ago. We are especially grateful for your important participation in the development of our VCOD districts, as well as your consistent and insightful, insightful membership on the Design Review Committee. Many of our most critical developments in Yarmouth have your fingerprints all over them. I think we will always appreciate your candor and your straightforward questions, especially during some of our more contentious public hearings. And finally, the capstone of our vision plan, live, work, play, learn, will always be attributed to you. Thank you, Chris, for your service. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
With that comment being made, we wish Chris good luck in his future stuff, but that means this seat is empty, so fill out a talent bank form at Town Hall online, so that we can fill this seat, too.
And we also have a card from Mr. Brad Goodwin for you, Chris, so you have a couple of things to pick up. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, could I, could I mention one other board member item?
Sure.
I think it's appropriate to acknowledge not just Mr. Vincent's accomplishment, but to put that aside for one humble second and just say, I am really happy that the Sagamore Bridge is going to be replaced, number one, and officially be funded, number two, and more importantly than anything else, it will be regardless of the results of the November election. I think that's really important, and it is a crucial piece of all of our lives. And the only bad news is, it wasn't $2 billion, so they can't do both bridges at the same time. But it is a really important piece of news that I don't think should go by without us acknowledging it. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. You happen to know that bridges and tunnels are my favorite thing, right? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Kath, what, anything that you have?
I had one thing, and it's lost. It slipped my mind. I remember saying, oh, I should bring that up at the meeting tonight, and it's gone. Sorry.
You can send us an email. Our next meetings, for August 7th and the 21st? Anything, anything that you know about items that are coming up for those?
Only the 21st with regard to the seasonal, but nothing on the 7th at this time.
Okay. Great. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.